Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun on August 23rd, 2022 at 7:05 PM or 7:07 PM. Kind of a roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Braun?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waring?
Here.
Commissioner Pearson? Let the record show you do have a quorum.
Okay, and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of Republicans stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if we can have a moment of silence for all those in harm's way here and abroad. Okay, and so on our agenda tonight, we have business meeting items, Resolution 2022-16, official zoning map corrections. Town Administrator, would you like to present this?
Yes, what you have in front of you, if you recall back in, I guess it was July, we had completed a lot of work in making changes to certain properties in the Town of Rising Sun. The zoning designations changed, and those changes don't become official until a zoning map is created. And we did create and update that zoning map. However, as I've been reporting over the last couple of months, there's just a lot of interest and activity going on in the Town of Rising Sun, which from time to time leads us to looking at old documents to try to find answers or to give property owners some direction on their properties. And I came across two properties that are owned by the same owner, and they're described in the resolution, in which the properties were annexed into the town back, I believe in like 2005 or '06, something like that. They were annexed back into, they were annexed into the town, and the intent was for them to be annexed under the R2 residential zoning, and that's what the annexation says. It was R2 residential zoning. However, the subsequent maps that were made were showing the property zoned as R1. So this resolution here tonight is, is taking the map that you just adopted back in July and making a tweak to it to get that property zoned properly and in accordance to how it was annexed into the Town of Rising Sun. If you would, I'll show you real quickly on the map, the property that I am talking about is this one, if you can see the cursor down here on the, right near the Knutson Track is where it is at. There are two single-family lots that are just under, I believe like just under an acre and a half, around an acre and a half a piece. And in the past, they were shown as that yellow color, which is R1, when in fact they should be the orange color, which is R2. So this is a corrected map to reflect that. And with the resolution, again, we always try to put things in resolutions, so it's not like the way we are now, fumbling through decades of records to try to find answers for something. So we try very diligently to put these things in resolutions so they're easier to be found. So this is just a resolution explaining the change in the zoning map.
Okay.
Would you like me to read it into the record?
Sure.
Okay. Town of Rising Sun Resolution 2022-16, Scribe News Error, Zoning Map Correction. And let me say that scribe news error is actually an official term for people who make maps, and if there's a mistake, a line's not put in right, it's called a scribe news error. So that's, that's what we're calling this resolution, scribe news error zoning map correction. You have the standard boilerplates, and I'm actually going to skip through some of the other boilerplate because we've been reading this over and over in past ordinances and resolutions. And it has to do, the other whereas is talk about the town or the state's guidelines on zoning regulations, which then hand that authority off to the town's regulations on zoning, and then it gets down to talking about zoning maps. So I'm going to skip down to the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, the 6th one here, and I'm just going to say, whereas section 12-110 of the above-town zoning code, title Official Zoning Map, states in part that the incorporated areas of the town are hereby divided into zones as shown on the official zoning map, which together with all explanatory matter therein, is hereby adopted by reference and declared to be part of this ordinance. And whereas on July 12th, 2022, the Mayor Commissioners adopted Resolution 2022-15 titled Adoption of the Town Zoning Map, which incorporated recent changes in zoning designations that were previously approved by the Mayor Commissioners on May 10th, 2022. And whereas upon review of town records, it was discovered that a previous version of the town zoning map had inadvertently recorded the zoning of 629 and 635 Joseph Bick Memorial Highway, tax ID 06-007953 and 06-041973, has been zoned R1 single-family residential, when in fact both properties were annexed into the town under annexation Resolution 2006-03 as R2 single-family residential. And whereas this error, a script news error, was carried forward and incorrectly shown on subsequent zoning maps to include the map recently adopted on July 12th, 2022. And whereas the Mayor Commissioners wished to correct the scribe news error by adopting the attached zoning map dated August 23rd, 2022, which now shows the proper zoning for the above detailed properties. Therefore, it be further resolved that the Mayor Commissioners of the, of the Town of Rising Sun have passed, approved and adopted this resolution on the 23rd day of August 2022, and have accepted this revised zoning map as the official zoning map of the Town of Rising Sun.
Okay. Do we have a motion to, a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to... For Resolution 2022-16.
Okay, second? This is weird. Oh, any, any discussion?
No.
Okay. Do we have, vote all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two to zero. Okay. Ordinance 2022-03, Rental Inspection Ordinance. Town Administrator, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, so what you have before you is, you actually have three documents before you. You have the actual, what we always call the enabling ordinance, and this ordinance, like a lot of our documents, are set up, the ordinance is set up to reference another document. And in the past, since 2015, the town has had a property maintenance code. So the other two documents basically are modified to incorporate the intent of this ordinance, which is to start up a rental inspection program that would require the registration and inspection of all rental properties in the Town of Rising Sun. What we can do here tonight is read the opening paragraph into the minutes as the introduction of the ordinance. You have the two companion documents. The ordinance will be made available to anyone, and the two companion documents. And again, it's important to, and let me show you this for clarification for the board, what you have in front of you is Chapter Nine of the Town's Property Maintenance Code, which is where the rental inspection, registration and inspection program would be housed in there. And then the other document that you have is Chapter Two of that Property Maintenance Code, that's been in place for some time. And you have all the original language in black, and then red is representing the new language, which these are all definitions that were modifying and improving some of the definitions in the Property Maintenance Code. But more importantly, were incorporated definitions that would be needed for enforcement of the rental registration and inspection code. The one thing that I want to be clear on, the ordinance references the changes being strike-through where they're deleted in this particular section, because Chapter Nine is completely brand-new, so there's no strike-through or track-changes. Under this document, there are track-changes that for the purposes of the viewing audience, I'm showing the additions in red and the deletions and strike-through, but I'm going to produce the copy that will show the additions and double underline and the strike-through because it's, you know, all of our ordinances are kept in black and white, so you won't be able to see the changes. So this is just for the purposes of people being able to view the changes easier. The actual ordinance, if adopted, will have the strike-through and double underline to accompany that ordinance for archive purposes. So with that, you have the two companion documents, and I'll read the opening paragraph here. I'm battering the sunlight in my eyes here. All right. Ordinance number 2022-03, and Ordinance of the Town of Rising Sun, Town, Cecil County, Maryland, amending the general laws of the Town of Rising Sun by amending and adding language to the Town's Property Maintenance, Minimum Housing and Quality of Life Code, Edition 2016-01, by deleting, amending and adding additional language to Chapter Two titled Definitions, and adding a new Chapter Nine to be titled Rental Registration and Inspection Program, and deleting and repealing certain articles and provisions in conflict therewith, and to repeal any and all other ordinances and parts of the ordinances in conflict therewith. So again, this is read into the minutes. It sits for two weeks and can hypothetically be voted on at the next town meeting.
Okay. So, hey, Town Administrator, did we say that on the Resolution 2022-16, did we use the word approve anywhere in the motion or in the introduction to it? I just want to make sure. We said we were going to approve it.
I didn't really hear that the motion was approved. I just heard a motion.
Okay. Should we probably, we should probably go back and clarify that.
Yeah, if you feel more comfortable.
Yeah. So we're going to reapprove 20, or revote on 2022-16. So do we have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-16?
Yes, I make a motion to approve.
Okay. And a second? And no discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It occurred to me that the word approve never came out of anybody.
I'm hearing it. I heard you the first time, and I'm hearing it again.
Did I say approved? Or did either one of us say approved?
I heard it.
Okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure, so I just wanted to clarify that. Okay. Are there any, so no additional public presentations?
No.
Is there any citizens' input? Anyone? Staff report, Town Administrator?
We're like really facing a lot of work right now. I would say internally, we're Judy and Gary and Juanita have been working diligently over the last, I'm going to say close to two months now, if not longer, working with a third-party vendor to automate our building permit process here. It's a very high-octane, very sophisticated system that will make it a lot easier for our residents and contractors alike to be able to secure building permits all electronically through our website and through the software. It will also, it potentially could cut down on a lot of the paper volume that we have coming in because, you know, drawings that people have could either be submitted through CAD drawings or some other type of program for us to be able to look at, as opposed to big rolls and plans and stuff like that. Sometimes we are going to still request the big plans because sometimes the CAD drawings can be very busy in trying to go through them. So we were hoping to get the program up and running back, I believe in early July is when we wanted to get it up and running, but the vendor has ran into a couple issues of fine-tuning it, so it should be coming on board here shortly. The houses, we have a couple houses under construction. Gary's been very busy doing footing inspections and foundations and framing. We did, we will be doing a fire sprinkler inspection on one of the new houses here. From the standpoint of occupant safety, we've been able to incorporate a lot of new residential fire sprinkler systems in some of these residential homes. We've had a couple townhouses that have been retrofitted with sprinklers or are on their way to being retrofitted with sprinklers, and a couple existing, at least one existing property that went through some renovations requiring residential sprinklers also. The other thing that I would just say for clarity's sake, I received a, and I sent it to most of the board members, I received a notice from the State Fire Marshal's Office now recognizing me as an Assistant State Fire Marshal with the State of Maryland, which I basically have been enforcing the fire codes in the Town of Rising Sun. That is something we did when I first came to Rising Sun back in 2008, but now it's being more formalized where the State Fire Marshal is now recognizing the accomplishments that we've made, the credentials that we've been able to secure, and now we basically have the complete blessing of the State Fire Marshal's Office to enforce fire codes in the Town of Rising Sun. The other thing that we've been doing is we're getting a lot more active in property maintenance issues in the town. High grass, sidewalks being blocked with vegetation, stuff like that, some junk vehicles. So we, we are, we are slowly ratcheting up our property maintenance program to get out there on a regular basis and take care of the more egregious situations. We're not driving. It's never been the intent to drive up and down the street and see how many code violations we can find. We try to be respectively, respectfully reactive from the standpoint of we don't want to be out there shaking the bush, looking for every kind of violation we can find, but yet we don't want residents to get frustrated thinking that the only way something gets resolved is if somebody registers a complaint. So we're just trying to find that happy balance of enforcing the property maintenance codes, keeping things cleaned up where necessary, and improving, you know, the community from that standpoint. That's all I have.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Police Chief, do you have?
I've only got two things. My report's rather brief. September 1st is the first day of school. Look for a lot of pedestrian traffic because kids start to walk around that time. So be mindful of that when you're traveling through town. Also, on October 8th, we'll have Spooktacular. You're going to see some, see some detours and delays around town, so be prepared for that. On the, to backtrack on the events from a few weeks ago, where vehicles and stuff were being broken into or entered and items stolen, we've all of a sudden had a complete stoppage in those cases, but we're still accepting any information. If you've got something that you think may be valuable to us, please pass it on. It might help us bring closure to this. But right now, they seem to have stopped around town. And that's it for my report.
Thank you, Chief. Assistant Town Administrator, do you have a report?
I do. I just want to share some things to expand a little bit on what Chief was saying about Spooktacular. We do apologize, it was originally communicated that that would be on the 15th, but due to other things happening in Cecil County, closing the roads at that time was not going to be a really good idea because the Five Star is that weekend, and there was just a lot of other things that would put a lot of traffic through. So we're moving to October 8th. We did send out to every home that we have an email for today, a new flyer that shows October the 8th. So check your email, you should have that. We're also going to be decorating the town for Turn the Town Teal in support of ovarian cancer. Then we also have the materials in to repair the swing sets. We had taken some swing sets that were causing a little bit of injury problem in Veterans Park. We'd taken them down. The materials are here to fix those, so we'll get those fixed back up for the weekend. And other than that, staffing's good. Everything else is going really well, so.
Thank you. And Town Attorney, Che Gole, do you have anything for the report?
Well, we've been working hard on the things that you did tonight, but one of the things to keep you updated on is the 16-inch Main Street property. We've worked on some scenarios with the county and have researched other towns that have had the same problem, and you'll be getting a memo from me and the Town Administrator about the current status and what we're going to need to do.
Thank you for that. And with that, we'll skip over the Mayor's report. Commissioner Braun, do you have a report?
I have no report.
Okay, and I have no report. Upcoming town meetings, September 13th and 27th, and then October 11th and 25th. Spooktacular is Saturday, October 8th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Upcoming holidays, town halls closed, Labor Day, Monday, September 5th, and Columbus Day, Monday, October 10th. And with that, is there anything else to come before the Board tonight? Okay, hearing, nothing else? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so meetings adjourned.
Take care, Jay.